And to the Republic of Richard Sands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We had some discussion last time as to whether we approved the agenda or not, but is everybody happy with the agenda?
Can I go home, man?
It's not quite over, but surely. Do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen's meetings, regular session December 12th, 2017, and executive session November 28th, 2017. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them?
I will have those, um, minutes as printed.
I'll second those as presented.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Garen?
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Uh, vend the warrant number fifty-four for two hundred seven thousand, hundred ninety-three thou- Hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Payroll warrant number fifty-five for three hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty cents. Vend the warrant number fifty-six for thirty thousand, five hundred dollars and twenty-two cents. Vend the warrant fifty-seven, eight thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Withholding warrant number fifty-eight for one hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Vend the warrant number fifty-nine, twenty-five thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars, sixty-three cents. Amulet's commitment, twelve A, thirteen thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars. And amulet's commitment, twelve B, for sixty-one thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
The following, uh, payroll number sixty, three hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Vend the warrant sixty-one for four hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. School warrant number sixty-two for three hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Withholding warrant sixty-three, one hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. And mobile park, number one, five thousand, one hundred sixty dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And approve the selectmen's bills for... One nine two eighteen. Uh, national grid, twenty-eight dollars and eight... Is that right? Twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents for national grid?
No, probably for the concession.
Oh, yeah. This is nice.
I want some of it.
I want some of that juice. Now, this is more like a town hall, electricity, one thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars, that's national grid. Law account, uh, Matthew Bender Company Incorporated, five hundred one dollars, sixty-one cents, that's Mass Law Books subscription. Selectmen's expense account, one hundred six dollars and sixty-three cents, W.B. Mason. Plymouth County Corporate Extension Service, a hundred fifty dollars. Uh, appropriation for Plymouth County Corporate Extension Service, Plymouth County Four-H Youth Development Program. Law account, Michael Gilman Esquire, Professional Services, seven hundred fifteen dollars and change. Selectmen's expense account, Halifax Postmaster, various denomination of stamps, sixty-seven dollars. And selectmen's expense account, seventy-five dollars, uh, University of Mass, registration fee for Shelley Cleveland. And the final one is for law account, five hundred fifty-six dollars, twenty-five cents, Attorney Lawrence Mayo, P.C.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we're gonna move on to a scheduled appointment, which was, which is definitely one of the most pleasant things we get to do. Actually, a, a, a real pleasure. Uh, we're going to present some certificates this evening to John and Patrick McCarthy, who have achieved the goal of becoming Eagle Scouts. Hey, congratulations to both of you, job well done. We have some, uh, certificates here for you that we'd like to present you.
Let's see if we can tell from school.
I, I, I can't, so I was just gonna name names and, uh, see who walked up first.
John and Patrick.
I just happened to open Patrick's first. That's Patrick. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And John?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Great job.
And I'd just like to say that I enjoyed the ceremony, thank you for inviting me to it. That was about my twenty-third Eagle Scout ceremony. If, for those people who know, we have one of the smallest Eagle Scout units. It's scout units in the country, and yet percentage-wise, we've got the highest amount of people that are Eagle Scouts. Which says a lot for the community and the parents and, and the young men who put themselves out to do the, kind of carry things for the town. Thank you.
Yeah, I've known you since you were this tall. Mr. Roy taught them everything they know about basketball. Uh, maybe you could just remind the audience of what your projects were?
My project, I built a shed down by the, uh, blacksmith shop for the, uh, storage of, uh, historical objects, including a wagon that's, that was previously stored in the, uh, blacksmith shop.
Very nice job, too.
Um, and for my project, I, um, built, uh, water crossings, uh, for the trail, um, of the, start, for the tr- 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 conservancy trails, um, over, uh, near Summit Street. I also, uh, installed these crossings and removed the old damaged ones, uh, as well as marked off, uh, one of the trails.
Very nicely done.
Thank you so much. Really, nice job, boys. Nice job, really.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. And thanks for not leaving town.
Whoop, don't fall.
This is not the time. This is how it works. Hold, hold over. Someone come in the door right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, once again.
Thank you, really. So proud of you, really.
Thank you. Making our town.
All right, who does the band, 'cause they're so good at it?
Patrick, uh, condensed.
That was so good. Really, you did, I love, uh, my, my son's on the football team, but I would just sit there and watch you, you were unbelievable.
Thank you.
Nice job. Lot of passion in your...
And mom, congratulations, mom and dad.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, we, we have to...
We don't have certificates for you guys, but you already know that, you know?
It, it doesn't happen without the support, for sure.
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much for coming in, sorry we couldn't be there.
No, it's all right, thank you very much.
We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Take care. Can't believe it's Joe Murray.
And they're still growing.
That was just good stuff.
Well, it's funny, I saw your name on the agenda, and I was like, oh, it's gotta be Joe Murray. I was already doing it, but it's good.
It is.
Yeah, awesome. Awesome.
Yeah, couple minutes.
Wait, wait, hold, hold, hold it, hold it. Where, where, where's the coffee and doughnut?
Ah, I know.
Oh, yeah, we...
You know, I have to take my camera.
Just in case somebody wants to...
Yeah, just as long as you bring the glazed ones, we're all right.
We, we've got a couple minutes.
We gotta wait.
Yes.
The time, yep.
Technically, we're not.
I'm familiar with this.
I'll load you quickly.
The board can do a few items before that. Um, snow day, the board needs to approve snow days for town hall, the council on aging, for Thursday, January fourth, and Friday, January fifth. This, fifth is a little weird, I was not expecting to ask for a snow day, but when the staff came here on Friday morning, the door was...
Couldn't get in the door?
Yes, the door, the lock itself was frozen, it took a fair amount of time to get it open. I know several employees came here and...
Well, one, one employee, or shall we say, got his key stuck in the door?
Yes, later on that day, yes. But resolved that by using the air drive, so... So I'm asking the board to approve both days.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The recycling abatement, we have a request for fiscal twenty-eighteen, uh, bill nineteen eighteen. Uh, Parpy Ore says that they use a private hauler, um, that was the PM, unless I've got anything missing?
Yeah, she was gonna send in a hardship letter, I don't know what it was gonna entail, but we never received anything.
I'll make a motion that we not approve the abatement for bill number one nine one eight for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, one of the last things on the town audit for the financial statements is what's called a representation letter. Basically, the town is sending a letter to the R saying, hey, yes, we gave you everything that you needed, not just what you requested, but, you know, we were honest in all our dealings with you and such. It's been signed by myself, the town accountant, and the treasurer-collector. My signature would be the chair of the board, so if the board would authorize, the chair to sign.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On the Pope's Tavern project, the building committee sent over copies of the amended agreement with Winslow Architects for the work that they're doing on the Pope's Tavern renovation expansion. Town council did recommend a small change in section seven, um, which I'm gonna incorporate in there unless the board says otherwise. On the payment schedule, there had been some confusion about the schedules A and B. A and B now match, in the sense of each phase has the same amount of money. There were, let's say, five or six phases, and there were maybe eighteen or so steps within those phases. The, the amounts now match, I have an updated Schedule A. I talked to John Winslow this afternoon about the pay, the actual schedule of payments, particularly on the construction phase. And what he and John Campbell had worked out was that John Campbell's, you know, in terms of the additional money that's going in there, that's why they didn't sign in a contract, that it no, not go in right at the beginning, 'cause those phases of the work have already been done. However, both John and John had said that the architect has done more work in those areas than was originally, um, expected. And so that, in terms of dollar value, um, he's not being paid the amount he should have been paid, if we had the right contract to begin with. So that the P, the, there are, I think, four phases, four steps in the construction document phase. The idea is to pay the architect more than he would normally received in those first two steps of the construction documents, in essence, to allow him to catch up. So, um, that's the explanation of why, for instance, instead of, at the twenty-five percent, um, step for the construction, he's receiving twenty-five percent of the funds for the construction phase, he's receiving something like forty-five percent. And through step two of the construction phase, he would receive something like seventy-five percent instead of fifty percent. So, I've left those amounts alone, I did wanna get an explanation before I talk with you, and that's the explanation I received.
Do you feel comfortable, 'cause I know we were at the building committee meeting, do you feel comfortable with the amount that was negotiated in, to be in addition to what the original agreement was?
Well, only... How do I put it? Every dollar that we spent on the architect, and I'm not saying it's not deserved, but every dollar we spent on the architect is a dollar that's not going to the actual construction. I don't know that the... I suspect one way or the other, it's not gonna make a material difference, in the sense of, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars more from the original, uh, contract to this one, out of a, quote, two million dollar overall project. I, obviously, it may mean more nips and tucks...
Yes.
In the construction work, in the sense of, but I think that the building committee is already, uh, understands that that's a possibility, that we may end up doing as much as we can with the actual construction, so that the shell is there. But there may not be everything in the shell. I don't mean that we'd look at studs and such, but in the sense of, if there are things that can wait for a later date, for the entire project, that we may have to do that. This would, uh, may, depending on when we actually go out to bid and get bids in for the work to be done, mean that one, more additional items doesn't get done during this part of the project.
Right. And are we back on schedule, I know that they were, are they on the agenda for the zoning meeting for...
They met, yeah, Z, they met with ZBA last night, got the necessary approvals for variances and for special permits, so that's done. The, they were to meet with the planning board on Thursday, of course, we got hit with a snowstorm, that's been scheduled now for, um, site plan review on January seventeenth. So, I mean, it's on schedule as well as it can, they're excited from the snowstorm, but yes, they got those necessary approvals, so...
The big item of the zoning, clearing zone, planning board will work it out, whatever it is, but as long as they get the variances.
Okay, and that was obvious.
So, I mean, it, it's, I think everybody associated, the architect, um, the OPM, the building committee, council on aging, understand that this is, um, unlike some of the other projects we might be dealing with, something where the margins are much narrower than what we expected or hoped for. And there may be adjustments, not, I'm hoping dramatically, in the project to allow it to happen. But I think the only way it's going to happen is to move ahead with this. I'm not, obviously entirely happy that we had to renegotiate the contract, but, um, that's, it was either that or, yes, and start over to some extent with a new architect. The timeline would obviously have been blown up, and we may end up having to spend even more money with a new architect than what we're doing right now.
Do you have any motion? Who signs it?
Um, the board does.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we sign the contract with Winslow Architects for the senior project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, do we have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you say that?
I did.
Okay.
They suspect we've caught up to the clock. What is that? Oh, these are the originals, okay. Well, I, oh, oh, deal with that, okay. So I think you're on time now for your next appointment.
All right, seven forty-five, I guess that means, um, Joseph tomorrow.
So, um, my name is Joe Murray, I, um, I'm here to request a condo official's license at three fifty-five Fleming Street. It is, um, the new, potentially new Dunkin' Donuts. I represent a company called Gen Two, so you may have actually seen that on the application, that's our franchise corporate name. We have, uh, we purchased the store in Halifax from somebody named Ray Messier about four years ago. Ray's been, was here for quite some time, and then we purchased the store from Ray. We, we have a bunch of stores, we have some in Bridgewater nearby. Been in business, the owners have been in business approximately forty years, rookies, but we're new to Halifax, four years new to Halifax, but they've done, they've done good business for quite some time. So, what we're trying to do is take the store that's in Seven-Eleven, Tedeschi's, I still call it Tedeschi's, and relocate that next door essentially to three fifty-five, and build a, um, a larger building. And we would have some bathrooms, and we'd have some seating, and, uh, try to have a nice place for our customers to go. So that's really why I'm here tonight, to ask, ask, answer your questions and ask if you would allow that to happen.
Actually, I'm glad you mentioned the, the fact that, uh, there'd be some seating in there, and obviously, accommodations for, uh, restroom facilities. I think that, that was kinda traditionally something in town that people enjoyed, being able to have a coffee and chit chat a little bit. I, I think that's a, a good thing for the community to have that available to them again.
Yeah, it's, I, it's, we're trying to make it, you know, kind of a colonial look, if you will, but some of the other Dunkins, I'm...
Oh, sorry, yeah. It's longer than...
Sorry about that. Some of the other Dunkins you'll see have a little bit more of a modern look, but we went with the colonial stuff, because we felt that it fit every place around here. Um, and you'll notice that it has potentially two other tenants. We're gonna be in front of the building, um, but it could potentially have a couple other tenants. It's about eighteen hundred square feet combined in the back. We don't know if that means two people, or if that would be one person.
Dry cleaning would be good, if I can offer a suggestion.
We, we actually have, um, a building that we lease to a dry cleaner in Waymouth, and, um, very, we, we think it's a good fit for the area. We'll kinda look around the area, and we're hoping that we can bring somebody on board, so...
Wow, good thought.
I knew that.
I don't know. But, yeah, sure.
That didn't come up once before, so this wasn't new and unique to me.
Usually, you probably know the carpet one, and that's, there's a dry cleaner in there, and, uh, it's great, 'cause people can go right inside, and they drop off their cleaning, get a coffee. It's usually good.
But in different places.
Three or four.
In different places.
And it's a little bit, you know, it has a little bit of a, a tall piece there, sorry about that.
Yeah, can you, is this the front of the...
If you're looking, so, yes, just to get the signage in there.
Right, that's the front.
And that's the front, and it, the funny thing is, it, it's a little bit hard to kind of visualize it, but the front entrance is a little bit of, on an angle. So if I'm standing on the property, looking at the street, the Dunkin', the side of the Dunkin' actually looks right at the street with the corner of the door right there, and I can show you our plans, I brought the plans, but...
So you can, so you've still got a view of the other...
So, so the front of your building is gonna be coming down the stop and shop driveway, that'll be the front of the building facing that?
Yeah, essentially, we'd be faced that way, and the door's on an angle.
Yes.
So you get a little bit of the street, but you, a little bit of the stop and shop. All the parking is on that side, I brought all the plans, if you wanna look at them, but, um, all the parking's on that side. We, we've been through all the boards, uh, we actually have more parking than's required, but we feel that that was a good thing. It was designed originally...
For a two-story.
By Ray years ago to do a two-story building.
Two-story building.
Yeah, and we decided that, um, it didn't make sense for us, so...
What is your, what, what is the projection as with the completion of your bu- building?
Right around May first. So, if, as long as we stay out of the snow.
Yeah, you're doing good for a while. Come on, you're, you're in New England, you're supposed to be able to work through this thing.
We did, um, we did well for quite some time, and then it got frigid. But they made some headway, they had poured the foundation, and, um, the slab is in, and they're doing the, the septic system took, you know, a fair amount of time, and that's done.
Well, jeez, I mean, you got, you got above twenty degrees this week, should've been broken.
I know, well, we were looking at, uh, Thursday at fifty odd degrees, and we said, let's get going.
And rain, which might get some frost out of it.
Yeah, it's, it was a little bit concerning when, when we, when we poured, we had to put blankets on.
I was a little nervous when I went by and saw that.
Yeah, it's, um, we'll see, we'll see when the blankets come up, so hopefully it won't crack, and we did everything right, but...
Oh, my gosh, that would be terrible. How many people can sit in this Dunkin' Donut?
Um, it's, it's roughly, it shows eighteen on the plans, but there's one bench, and you could actually put two people on the bench, so twenty seats tops.
Okay, so not very big.
No, no, and, and the Dunkin' itself is eighteen hundred square feet, but the front of it, it, you know, a lot of, sadly, a lot of it's back and house stuff now.
Yeah.
Um, and the support that goes with it, um, we'd love to have more seats, but it really, we, we have a bunch of stores, and they don't...
No, the seats still get occupied.
They don't?
No, they really don't.
And it's a short occupancy for the most part.
It's a quick turnaround, um, the afternoon people spend, tend to linger a little bit. It's the newer colors that maybe you've seen in some of the other Dunkins.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Kind of, you know, I don't wanna call it upscale, but it's a little different from the old pink and orange Dunkins. It's got nice ceramic floors, and the walls are nice, nice tan calvers, and it's a stone, all the tops are all stone, and all the front of the millwork is all stone.
I heard rumors that they were gonna drop the doughnuts part, Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes, yeah.
Is that happening?
I'm, I'm being recorded, right? So I can't say what I'm really thinking. Being a long lifetime New Englander, uh, I've been here sixty-one years now, I grew up in Amington, not too far away, but, um, uh, I'm not, I'm not there, but it seems to be a trend for the future.
Yeah, I, 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 I'd read an article where they're trying to expand on the West Coast, and they're...
Yeah.
Just gonna say Dunkin'.
Yeah, it, it says Dunkin's, they tried, there's two stores, one's open in, uh, in Boston, and then the second one is gonna be in Quincy. And, um, our friends are actually opening it.
Why, why would you get rid of your trademark name, though?
Um, yeah, like I said...
Well, they're getting rid of the doughnut part of it.
I wasn't on the team that voted on that, let's just say that.
Well, look at like Starbucks, it's just one more, aren't they?
It, I think it's that, and, and I actually made the mistake of getting into social media arguments. I, I was told that I was just holding, lingering on something that passed.
A dinosaur, is that what it is?
I think I told you...
I think it's the right thing to do, so...
Yeah.
So we'll see.
Also...
But it's in test, it's, it's in test.
Yeah, since they're reducing the sandwich line and such, they're trying to emphasize on the drinks, which goes to the Dunkin', rather than the doughnuts.
Yeah, well, you know, I can appreciate that, but I, I've been around long enough, when they start reducing the size of the stuff on it, but the price doesn't change, in fact, sometime it goes up. So, are, are we saying we're getting paid more for less, or it changes? And I'm not throwing that at you, I'm just saying that's...
Yeah, things are, things get different, we, we do focus on the, as you mentioned, we focus on the drinks.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, we did a study, the company did a study, and that's what the customers are telling us, is, that's why they come. So we, we, you'll see, you probably saw this week, the, the menus changed slightly, and we're not focusing on lunch as much as we used to focus. Now we're focused on the breakfast, which is kinda where it all started.
Yeah, I was gonna say, breakfast is the, the main ingredient there.
Yeah.
My cousin's stepfather was Mr. Rosenberg, Bill Rosenberg.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
I came into the company, um, maybe a couple of years after he had moved on, but his Bob was there, Bob Rosenberg was there.
Yeah, his son, yeah.
When I came in, and, um, it became Allied Dome actually after that, which was a sad day, but, but necessary for the business to go on, so...
You know, it's funny, I was on Facebook a couple of months ago, and there was a kid at the town, at the elementary school, who had done a project on Dunkin' Donuts, and Bill Rosenberg, and I sent the article to my, uh, so that people still remember that he's the founder.
Yeah.
In Quincy.
People...
I remember Mr. Donut, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, oddly enough, that's where the company that I'm with now, that, it's a franchise group, and, um, you know, a couple of the stores were originally Mr. Donut stores.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had the security for the Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts for a while.
Well, Ray, Ray, Ray was Mr. Donut.
Yeah, yeah, I remember talking to Ray, though.
Yeah, and he's, he's doing great, we, we still see him, and, uh, Ray, Karen, they're doing great, and they're happy to be in the sun somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't blame him at all, I think it's a great thing.
If it was hotter in the kitchen, why would they have to move?
Yeah, yeah.
That's actually the only thing I miss about Dunkin', there was a time that you used to do bagels pretty much on site.
Yes.
And they were nice and warm and crisp, and then, of course, now it just doesn't work, you have to bring them in.
Actually, we do that still, and the store will have a, a small oven in it.
Really?
Yeah, it's in, originally, when they brought up bagels, they did it on front, you probably noticed that.
Yeah, right.
They had a wood-stone deck oven, and now the oven's slightly different, but, um, but we still have bagels.
'Cause there's nothing quite like a hot, a warm, not, not heated, but a warm...
The only thing that's better is, um, uh, chocolate chip cookies when they come out.
Do you have any?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, that's a given, that's a, that's a given.
Did you bring it?
So, so, so...
I know, I, I never know if I should or if I shouldn't.
No, yeah, that's right.
As long as it's under forty...
When I'm not here, something, I'll send it off, and you'll be surprised.
Yeah, we, we need a motion for the common business.
I'll move it, I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Oh, did you already move it?
No, go right here.
She, yeah, she usurped it, I, I, I heard her. Okay.
It's only painful for a second.
Can we ask a question from the floor? Sure. What did you say the capacity was again, seating capacity?
Twenty.
Twenty. Twenty.
Yeah.
There's a local coffee shop in this area that I frequent occasionally, 'cause I love Dunkin' Donuts, by the way. It's, has about a two-year lifespan, and, uh, there's an awful lot of folks that like to sit in there and congregate there, and they're looking actively for another place. You might find yourself overwhelmed.
Okay, well, that would be interesting.
I don't think twenty's gonna be the time, you know, but obviously.
That would be a...
That wouldn't happen to be the one located in Henson, is it?
What's that?
Is that the one located in Henson?
It is.
Yeah, that's a great place.
There's an awful lot of folks...
They've been giving their walkings.
In town, yeah, is that what you're saying?
Local, lots of workups in Henson.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, I know exactly.
Yeah, they're being squeezed out.
I'm telling stories on, on things, yeah, Sandy's Coffee Shop.
Yeah, they...
At two years, they planned to retire, and, uh, they have an awful big following.
Yeah.
And, uh, a lot of them will go to Dunkin' Donuts, but they'll come back to Sandy's just out of loyalty.
Sure, sure.
Uh, so Dunkin' Donuts is their first choice in many cases, so, yeah, we're all gonna... So Dunkin' Donuts is their first choice in many cases, so we're all going to converge on you.
That's going to be a sad day for the folks that go there all the time, so.
No, no, well, they're going to be happy to retire and the folks will have a new home. So that, I think that'll work out.
So only thirty-four people.
Yeah, if we have an issue, we'll come back and talk to the folks at town and see if that makes sense for...
Well, we haven't got to the point where, when I first moved to town, I used to have a donut little coffee shop in King's Plaza. I walked in one day and I usually walk there, I got my tea and stuff and left. One day I decided I wanted to sit. Everybody at the counter was looking at me like, you get two heads on it? All of a sudden he said, you know, there's Lloyd's seat.
Lloyd Wright.
You can't sit there.
Was that Lloyd Wright?
Lloyd Wright, yeah.
He must be a member of my group. Yeah.
And I'm sitting there and all of a sudden I feel his shadow over me and he's standing behind me.
Oh, wait, what? And he was a tall man.
Used to drive by watching chopping wood in his nineties outside in the house.
He was a tremendous man. I miss him at town meeting. For sure.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We expect great things from you.
You know, when it comes time, we can do a little opening celebration.
Sure.
Love to have somebody, we got a big pair of scissors and you need to...
Oh, no sharp objects.
Troy and I'd be happy to come, but Kim will grab the scissors.
Great, well, it's very nice to meet you. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Appreciate it.
Bye.
Thanks again, I know, talk to you a lot, so, and I know you.
I'll be happy to do that, to get you that permit. You will be using it right away.
No, no, no.
So I'll do it once I'm, you know, building permit and all that in your, um, board health.
Yes.
Then you can go down and see me and I'll shoot you. You're not going to need it now.
Not at all. We just wanted to come early so that we don't forget something.
That's true.
So, yeah. Bye, thank you very much.
Good night.
Is that, that's not your paper here, is it?
Joe, no, that's just the agenda.
No, that's the agenda.
But we're past eight o'clock, so we can move on to Mr. Walsh, David Walsh.
And the little looking gentleman behind you there.
Wow, fly away, we'll get you everywhere. First of all, I'd like to introduce David Walmsley, the choir master. I'm Dave Walsh, I'm the commander, and we are post six-two-five-eight, where veterans of foreign wars of Halifax. And I know a lot of folks, I guess, I would say that are probably not aware that we have a post in Halifax. But thanks to you folks for letting us use your town hall. We meet every second Thursday of the month on the second floor at seven o'clock. And we're a small post, we're a very active post. We're in District Twelve. But we're here today to get the business, to present a special award. The veterans at large have identified a special individual within the community that's been a real asset to this community. And as veterans of foreign wars post six-two-five-eight, I'm sorry, did you hear your question?
No, no, no.
And the Department of Massachusetts and Veterans Warriors of the United States, we would like to nominate a first responder. And we would like to nominate Chief Edward Ted Broderick for Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. Now, the packet for, for Mr. Broderick has already been forwarded to the State House in Boston, where he's going to compete statewide for Officer of the Year. There's only several that have gone out through the state, because this is a pretty competitive situation, and Chief Broderick is an exceptional individual to get nominated, because the criteria is pretty strict. So you would be very proud of this man as we are in this town. So without further ado, I'd like to say, if it goes on to the state and the power will be with us, he may go on to the nationals.
Awesome.
And the ultimate would be Law Enforcement Officer of the Year as first responder. We would like to do this again next year if we can identify someone in the community, but Chief Broderick is an outstanding example. He's shown compassion, he's shown professionalism, and without further ado, Chief, will you come forward, please? I'm going to read this before I give it to you, okay? This is to, awarded to Edward Ted Broderick, Chief of Police Halifax Mass, in grateful recognition of unyielding adherence to the highest ideals of law enforcement, maintaining, preserving, and protecting the lawful rights of all citizens. Not only have you started as an individual in Clinton and in Halifax, come up through the ranks and you've served us well, and we're very proud to be a member of this town, knowing that you're taking care of us day to day. So, good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
I'll give this to you, and if you would, please, I'd like to get a picture of...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
You're away how much I...
Love this stuff.
Yeah.
Certainly in front of the veterans, and that's how I'll start, in front of the veterans, because you were highly recommended in several areas, and we all felt very grateful to be able to do this, and good luck to you all the way along.
I appreciate it very much.
I'd like to nominate you in saying, hey, a man of the year nationwide, wouldn't that be something?
He would love that.
Yeah.
Fly over with the flag flying behind the back.
I can see him on all the talk shows now.
No, he does pretty well on the camera, right? Pretty good on the camera.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks for coming along with us.
Our pleasure.
Sitting a little nosy, I like this.
Oh, no, it's great. Great.
We've got a few minutes till our next appointment, so.
We dealt with the Pope's Tavern. We have a note from Susan Lawless, she would, who's the Assistant Town Clerk, she'd like a letter from the Board confirming that the town's budget for this year did not include funding for her, to send her to the three-day Town Clerk's Conference in February. This way she can apply for a scholarship to allow her to attend the conference.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board needs to refer having Kim sign the CMS Medicare certification letter. This is sent to the providers, such as ambulance services, such as our own, on a periodic basis, basically saying, you know, that our agreement with Medicare and Medicaid continue, and in this case, Kim signed on behalf of the Board, but the Board needs to affirm.
So move, I can, yeah, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just want the Board to be aware that there's a Metro South breakfast meeting a week from now on the seventeenth at Stone Hill College with Jay Ash, who's the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development. I think each of you got a card with an invite, I plan on attending that one. I don't attend most of those, but the topics covered were sufficient that I thought would be a good idea, especially housing, community development has a lot of programs involving the cities and towns here in Massachusetts. Dog Park, Sue Vogt has been kept, has kept me apprised of what's happening with their various meetings. This is a group of, informal group of residents that are, been meeting together to look at the possibility of doing a dog park here in Halifax. They've provided some information about similar project over in Kingston. There's no action needed right now. I know they're going to be starting to look at some of the town properties as possible locations, but anything that would happen, obviously, would have to be brought to the Board, probably, and very possibly of a number of other town departments, but that's where things are. They are meeting, they meant less, just, and Kim was up there for a few minutes, so that's where things stand there. Okay, let's see, nineteen, surplus property form ZBA, they have some recording equipment, a digital recorder, a headset, and dictation machine that they would like to declare surplus. The digital recorder might be, I'm going to make sure that the departments know about that, because that's only four or five years old. The headset's more than ten and the dictation machine's almost twenty years old.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nineteen Chestnut Road, the furniture problem's been resolved, and as far as I can see, the property's in good shape, so I'm going to close that file. Twenty-seven Hillside Avenue, we still have a junk car problem, I'm going to send a second citation to the property owner. If that doesn't work, I'm going to be consulting with Attorney Mayor of what other actions we could be taking. Bill Hinckley's going to be in in a couple of weeks to talk to you about possibly him serving on the Tonto River Stewardship Council. Silverleaf Farm is playing on South Street, at two eighty South Street's playing on selling a two-point-eight, two-acre parcel for a housing lot. It's in Chapter sixty-one A, so the town has the right to purchase the property ahead. My reading of it is that, where am I here? I think we passed that. I'm a little confused as whether it's eighty thousand or two hundred thousand. Some confusion in the correspondence here, but in any case, I don't see, I mean, the Board could either have me send this out for comments from the various departments, but I don't see really the point. It's a small enough acreage parcel and in the geography of the parcel is that...
It's considerably off the road.
Right, it's really not a good parcel for any town facility.
And I'd look position to do what he purchased in anyway, he may have his choice on it, so.
So if the Board would like, I can send a letter back to their attorneys, indicate that the town's going to pass on its option.
That would be my recommendation for me, if I have any use for us.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison's going to be in a few minutes to talk about his request for an underserved vehicle permit, and we'll get to that. Fieldstone Farms, we have the show dates for 2018. It's been distributed once already to the departments, I'm going to send another note out as follow-up, listing the matters that are in the consent agreement that was signed last year, the updated one, to make sure everybody's aware of them, if they have concerns or questions. As an example, we have a gazebo that probably cannot be used because it wasn't built according to building code.
They didn't have the architect certified, that wasn't working?
No, they never went ahead and did that, I believe.
Oh, that's unfortunate.
But as an example, we might want to, once we, we might want to send a note back to Fieldstone, once we have all the, you know, the list of dates that they need to meet certain conditions, we want to leave the note to them that the gazebo can't be used. But I'm going to send a note out to the departments about that. We do have a, another, we have an appointment later on tonight for another recycling abatement, so the Board will get to that. I'm waiting to hear back from the owner's project manager about the bids that came in for the siding doors and windows. They're still reviewing at what's called the Department of Capital Asset Management, which is state agency that holds files for firms that are bidding on various construction, municipal, state construction projects. They review those files and make sure those firms are going to be able to perform the work. Once I get back from them, I may very well some point in the next couple of weeks ask for the Board to hold a five-minute daytime meeting, so the Board could approve a contract with whichever firm is the low bid, but is also responsible low bid. Board needs to affirm the animal shelter agreement with Lakeville. They handle breeding adoption of dogs that we don't have owners for or and such, and this would be an agreement until December thirty-first of 2018. The Board previously signed this, but I need the Board to affirm its signatures.
I'll make a motion that we affirm the signature.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're waiting to hear back, I think, Pam from Harding about pricing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we sent, we sent the request for a quote for the planning committee and town meeting warrants. Zoning complaint, three forty-three forty-eight Montpontus Street, Gordon C. Andrews, being the younger, had filed a request for enforcement of the town zoning bylaws regarding three forty-three forty-eight Montpontus Street. This is the multifamily that's just south of Mia's on Montpontus Street, and approvals by the ZBA in 2014 allowed for the multifamily on the parcel. The zoning officer has a conflict of interest and he owns the subject property, so he can't make a determination as far as enforcement. A consultant of Land Use Council recommends the Board appoint a special CEO for this case, it could be myself, it could be somebody else. As much as there's the request for enforcement that has to be dealt with, you know, we're obligated to make a reply. Mr. Andrews does not have by himself grounds for pursuing enforcement, as he was not a party of interest in this matter, and the normal time limits for filing an appeal have long since expired, since the original permits from the ZBA were obviously three to four years ago. However, the request must be answered. If appointed, I would work with Land Use Council, review the matter, issue response to Mr. Andrews, or obviously the Board could choose someone else as the CEO in this case. They could not, I would not recommend, for instance, they choose the assistant, because that person's working directly for a party of interest. I might actually say Tom should do it, but he was the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer at the time.
And I have interest in the property, so I would have to accuse myself of it.
Okay, well, you know, I'm such the queen of zoning, not. So do you mind being CEO?
No, no, because I'm aware of the situation.
Well, it's, at this point, I would agree appoint Charlie Tooke, if that's all it is, that we've got to answer the appeal, and if you're going to work with Land Use Council, then I have no objections to that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
And Tom's abstaining on this one.
Yes.
We did get a note just today from the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, as Joan Pierce had talked with you last month about the possibility of the town transferring some or all of its rights to the property that was transferred to the town, so over years ago, as final part of the Burridge Pond Wildlife Refuge Settlement, the case with the state. The options would include the purchase of conservation easement, basically, the town would still own all the acreage, but the rear, the southeastern portion from the other, the far end, from where the choke point is, would have a concert, a certain restriction that would allow for a development, but also would allow DFW to use it in conjunction with their properties. Another possibility is to purchase the rear ten acres. Joan Pierce of DFW is thinking it might be worth about twenty thousand dollars, obviously would still have to be appraised. The third possibility is purchasing the entire parcel for two hundred and fifty, again, subject to appraisal, although to supplement that, to get it maybe to two fifty, if the appraisal didn't come in that high, DFW might purchase some land of low value from the town that is adjacent to other land it owns.
There's seventeen acres of land, maybe close to eighteen, around and off. They're only willing to give twenty thousand for ten acres, but they're willing to give two hundred and fifty thousand for seventeen acres?
Right, because the ten acres they're talking about is the back property.
It is more landlocked and it's past the choke point that they gerrymandered, I had to get that in.
I know, I know. It's, we're still working on it.
I know, I know. It's been fifteen years, I shouldn't be carrying a grudge that long, but it's okay.
In terms of the timing...
It's a concern, it's not a grudge.
Jonah, Jonah mentioned the land purchase committee that she would have to report back to as meeting in February, but on the other hand, she also mentioned it's likely we would have to have a town meeting vote on any transfer of any rights, whether it's the sale of property to have a town meeting vote on any, um, transfer of any rights, whether it's the sale of property or the conservation easement and such, in which case, unless for some reason we were having a special town meeting later this year, well, we're not going to have one in the next three weeks, let's put it that way. So my recommendation would be that, A, the board would get this out to the various departments for any comments, probably at some point have some sort of public forum, at least so that even if no one showed up, at least we've given people, you know, opportunity. Um, and then three, if we want to move this along, finally bring it to town meeting in May. It would be a lot, longer drawn-out process, but because she feel, thinks that the next meeting after February might not be until sometime in the fall, but the land's not going anywhere. Um, and, you know, we can work with that timetable. If that's agreeable to the board.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's an appropriate way to proceed.
Okay, so I don't know if you're not, you know, you're probably at your E fifteen, I think.
Yeah.
I don't see Mr. Duchesne.
I'm just talking.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize.
Yeah, when he wrote, he said that...
Well, congratulations, anyway, on the Crimson Tide.
Thank you. Pack of a game.
Yeah.
Why don't you come up front?
Okay. Okay. So I'm, uh, I'll read the letter that I stated from my father. Um, this letter will serve as our confirmation that I tongs to shame of Fourteenth Circuit Street and requesting to file an appeal about a decision that was reached by the board regarding the denial of my recycling abatement. There are a few issues concerning me regarding this matter. First, it is known that I have had Graham Waste, excuse me, Graham Waste Residential Services provide my weekly trash and my weekly recycle services for over five years now. I have filed this abatement with a confirmation letter from the service provider each and every year with the town of Halifax. It was also stated on the service agreement that the service would be continuing until further notice. My next issue is that the reason for my denial is due to the fact that I was only one day late according to the filing deadline. As you know, I am a disabled veteran with health issues. I recently became very sick and had to go back and forth between my doctors, the Veterans Association, and three different hospitals. For the record, I am terminally ill with cancer from Vietnam, Agent Orange. This letter of denial is only adding a great deal of stress that I am already under. I also feel that as a prompt taxpaying resident of over six thousand dollars annually, that I should not have to pay the surcharge fee just because I was filing one day late. I am kindly and respectfully asking for forgiveness of this rare overlook on my part and to have the decision overturned trying to force me to pay for a service that is already being provided to me. I feel I am in compliance with the recycling requirements, regulations by using Graham Waste Residential Services for my recycling needs. Furthermore, I am requesting that you allow my son Andrew Duchesne, myself, also of Fourteenth Circuit Street, to attend the appeal meeting as I am currently in Arizona due to my health issues. My son has power overturning over me and is able to represent me for matters like this in my absence. So, um, my understanding is he, um, well, he just recently, uh, was diagnosed with Agent Orange lung cancer. He's been in and out of chemotherapy, uh, excuse me, radiation. He hasn't done chemotherapy yet, and for some odd reason, he accidentally did overlook this abatement, and from what he told me, he did file it one day late, and he noticed I have the letter of denial here as well. And he asked me to come in here and file an appeal on this regarding it because he does have great Graham Waste Management Services providing his recycling services he has for over five years now. And, um, he is basically asking for this decision kindly to be reversed. And, uh, just going along, you know, he is very respectful, he understands that, and I do too, bills need to be paid on time, and for the most part, I'm pretty sure he does a pretty well job with that with property taxes, excise taxes, as I do myself, so I was hoping that this rare, um, mistake would be forgiven.
The, the real issue is that we have also denied other people the abatement because they filed late, and it gets really difficult trying to decide which case is more worthy than any other case. So typically what happens is you, you come up with your deadline date, cut it off at that date, as hard as that is, and especially in this circumstance, and I, I mean, I can't feel enough for him and your family. Um, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but it's awful hard to, to grant these things after the fact when we've denied other people appeals, and maybe not as quite an extreme case, but everybody has some kind of a reason.
And I understand, yes, sorry, I understand, you know, regulations and rules have to be put in place for a certain reason. I was hoping that due to the fact that he had been shuttled all over the place from West Roxbury to Brockton to Jamaica Plain, and it was just an honest overlook on his part, um, like I said, I'm pretty sure his record does speak for himself as far as his prompt payment.
I'm sure, I'm sure it does.
I'll go next. And when we were doing this, and we had, you know, changed the due dates a couple of times to accommodate people, because this bill, again, was due at a certain time, and I understand there's a lot, like I, you have special circumstances, as other people have come to us with illnesses, and it's a really hard thing for us, because personally, what I'd love to be able to do that, sure, but unfortunately, because it's such a gray area, when you say no, if you keep moving that finish line, then you, all the other people that you've said no to are going to be upset, and they have circumstances too. And so I'm, again, as Tom said, we're very sorry for his illness, and we thank him for his service, but that in itself isn't, I can't change it because of that.
I'm a veteran myself, and I understand what he's, what he's going through. I unfortunately have, have not had the illness that your father's going through, and I feel for him. But it's, it's, a policy is written, and at least my own personal policy, I try to be fair, firm, and consistent with, with things that I do, try to be fair to everyone. Whether it's one day or five days or fifteen days late, it's still late, and we had a cutoff date in which to do that. There's nothing personally against your father or anybody else out there, it's just that we have to set a certain standard and, and stand by it, otherwise, if we flux on all those things, then we lose our credibility, and as hard as it is, I'd love to be able to say, everybody, you don't have to pay recycling fees. I'd love to be able to do that. Unfortunately, because of the circumstances we're in these days with the money shortage and having to recycle and the state putting mandates on it requiring us to do certain things, we have to set some kind of standards, and that's where it's at. And, and believe me, my, my heart goes out, because I'm, I'm of the Vietnam era myself. So, you know, it's, it's a difficult thing to do, and, and your circumstances are very understandable, we changed it the first could forget, but unfortunately, it was, it was still late, and I'm sure all good telephone calls about this one change, but just, we're just trying to be fair to everybody when it comes down to it.
This isn't our personal business. If it was our personal business, we would, this is the business of the town.
It would have been a no-brainer.
It would have been a no-brainer, but we are elected to follow the rules, so we're very sorry. We wish you very well with your deal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What, what, what I'd like to say to finish it off though is to have him, for this year, make sure, you know, even if he sends it earlier before he gets the bill to send it in, at least we have it already.
Just a personal note, I know your dad, and it's even harder for me to say, I would like nothing better than to say yeah.
Well, it's appreciated for hearing it anyways.
Thank you so much. Good luck, you too, thank you.
We'll still have a few minutes.
Just a couple of reminders here, zoning bylaws, we are meeting with planning Z B A and the billing inspector in a couple of weeks. We had talked with them back in the fall about some possible zoning proposals and with the timetable before town meeting. Um, I felt, and I talked with you all about it last month, that it was necessary to have another meeting. It may be that we can't reach consensus on one or more of these, but I think it's, at least in several instances, that these need to be brought to town meeting in one form or another. Um, and we'll see how things play out. Um, Monpotsue Pond Aluminum Pumping Facility, the deadline, obviously the old one was November 30th, we've gone through another round of bidding, the, the new bid deadline is January 16th, so we'll have more...
Can I help you?
Yeah, we have a meeting, I guess, at eight thirty?
Yeah, come on in, but wait just a couple of minutes, but come on in, have a seat. Uh, just so the boards are aware, um, obviously when we were talking about the marijuana growing facility on River Street, um, a couple of months ago, there was mention that another portion of the property, there was a proposal, at least in infancy, for a very large solar array. That's become more real, um, there's at least the initial proposal with the building inspector. Um, we've told the developer they'll have to start working on consent, but not consent. Pilot agreement with the Board of Assessors, and we've given them examples, though obviously at a smaller scale, for the Summit Street one and for the one off of Route 58 at the Plinton Halifax line. Um, but I think that, given the size of the arrays, particularly, that it would be helpful for the board to meet with the developer sometime in the future. Obviously, we're going to have to be talking about the pilot at some point, but even beyond that, to, A, have the town hear more about it, but also have you hear more about it, and also even though it's not a permitting hearing, in that the, um, the solar array is a use by right, it doesn't require a special permit, no matter what zone it is, they're going to still need to do site plan review with the planning board. I think it would be helpful to give the public a chance to provide some input, because as part of the site plan review, the, it's not as much of a public hearing as it is for the special permit, for instance, the abiders aren't notified as an example in site plan review. Um, and I want to be able to give the public at least a place or a time so that they're aware of it, but also so that if they have questions or concerns that they can prop up. So I was thinking sometime maybe in February at one of the board meetings, I'd invite the developer to come in, if that's okay with the board.
Yep, absolutely.
And as it is, even the proposal that's before Rob right now is only, could be only phase one. It could, it is, it could be a potentially mammoth project.
Yeah.
How many acres are they talking about covering on there?
Several hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were talking about like the...
Yeah, I happened to be walking by when they were talking about it. It's considerable.
Yeah, and the, it may, it would be much, much larger than the one that's on the Plinton line.
Well, it's always nice to be wanted, because lately, we've been getting a lot of them.
Well, I mean, it's either that or you can develop the property some other fashion, which may not be as conducive to the town.
Perhaps, that's true.
So, and if townspeople wanted to buy his open space, well, then the town needs to make an offer, but no one's been interested in buying a lot of open space, really not to that extent.
We do have an interesting dog walking around.
Very large dog.
Very large dog.
You never see the dog again.
Some places that might be a good thing.
Yes, so I think we're at our eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Yes, we are. Yeah, eight thirty, we have Mr. Richard Harrison regarding some unregistered, A, unregistered vehicle permit.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. How you doing?
Yeah, I own a lot, uh, seven eight crossing the Tyro Wash, and currently I live over in Hal, over in Midmore, I'm a three-decker, and I got a little pocket, and now with the snow, it's even worse. And I'm just looking for someplace to put it. I've called a couple of storage areas, they're all full, it's a hundred bucks a month. So, and right now I have the property for sale, so once I sell the property, I really get the car out of there, because I'll have the money to do something with it. And I'm just looking for a permit for two, because my son was borrowing another car of mine while he fixed his. Now his is fixed, and I got no place to put the car that he borrowed, but once they get that back, I'm probably going to end up, you know, flipping that over. So, you know, it's a short-term thing, hopefully. And, uh, now that the sale signs up there and I get a little bit of, get the land per tested, it's considering it'd be a short thing to get the land sold and then get a lot of that. So just, you know, maybe six months or so, get the thing moved. It's an antique, and it's been in a couple of movies, so I want to kind of hang on to it and get it going again. Like, missed a couple of movies in the last two months too, because it's not running with the money.
The, um, I think the bylaw...
Yeah, I was about to ask about the bylaw, I thought it had to be something that was out of sight.
Well, no, without, without the permit, it needs to be out of sight.
Right.
With the permit, it would allow it to be in sight.
Okay. That's where I was going.
Yes.
So, so what you're looking for is a permit for two vehicles?
Yeah, just to, just because I'm going to find.
Do we have, do we have some questions?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Do we have any neighbors here that have some concerns?
Well, honestly concerned, we just wanted to know what was going on, we didn't know if a lot was going to be developed, whether it was going to be a car dealership or, you know, so that's really what we're hearing, just to know what's the plan.
I don't think that's what Mr. Harrison is asking for.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just storing it for the time being, because I got no place else to put them.
Isn't that the truck that's over there now?
Yeah, the little red one? Yeah. Yeah, no, it's, and I got, like, actually I got the property for sale now.
Mr. Harrison?
So once I get...
Mr. Harrison? Yeah, you need to direct it to him.
Not, I know, I know, just the technicality.
Oh, all right, yeah, now just explain to them, it's not going to be a dealership or anything like that, no, no, just storage.
Do we have the capacity to issue a permit for that?
Yeah, yeah. That's why the bylaws in there.
Are you really into Patty?
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 Yes, my sister.
Okay, I thought so.
The board can limit to a certain number of months, so if the board wanted to say, okay, July 9th, you have six months, for instance, you can do that.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you, I'd rather, rather put it on a, um, at, at time, ongoing six-month deal, if we're going to do it.
Which like it would be six months.
Then we can review it every six months.
Well, I would just, I would just let the permit expire six months, Mr. Harrison, at that point, if you felt it was necessary, could come back.
Okay, I would have no, no issue, but I feel better if it was, was without a sight, I mean, but if the boot by law allows us to do that...
If the vehicles could be parked farther away from the street, that would be helpful.
That's where I was going to go.
Well, if you can't go on that particular side, it's on, it can't go back that much further. That's the short side of that lot. The other side is three hundred feet, that side that's on there right now is, uh, I think a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and seventy-eight feet. I mean, I could probably get it going and push it back another fifty feet as well, but on that side, that's about it. I mean, if push comes to shove, like a plane, I'll put a bush or something around there, or a fence or something like that.
What was running through my mind, and it left some footprints there too, was that, you know, is there any chance to put a stockade fence or...
Yeah, I, I... A couple of sections of fence, just to block it off.
Just to block it off.
Yeah, I could do that, you know, I got a couple of pieces of stockade, so it's not part of the obvious in that.
Because I'd feel a lot more comfortable, even though it's not required, it'd be, it'd be, I can point, we got to be consideration of the neighbors.
I understand that. Yeah, I'll put one in front, one on the side, just to make it...
Yeah, just kind of box them in so you don't have that view from the street.
Yeah.
Especially for the neighbors too.
When would you be able to do that? I realize the snow is sixteen feet deep right now.
Yeah, right. Now the ground is a foot, is a foot frozen, you know? I mean, get up there and start hacking away at it. If someone, you have to get some things together.
You'll have some serious mud in there in the next couple of days.
Yeah, with three inches of rain.
It'll be easier to put the post in.
I think it's slosh.
Put three inches anyway.
I hope you'll...
I, I'd feel more comfortable in front of the fact that he could follow through with that.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I was thinking either, you know, one of those temporary things or, or two sections of fence would be perfect there, right across.
And I can put both cars back in there, and we'll be fine.
Yeah, I mean, you get two eight-foot sections, the cars are about seven foot wide, and close together, it, it'll take the curse off of it.
Oh, yeah, I'd do that. Like, the second car, I, I don't know if I'm going to keep it, because it's a Volvo, and it's an older one, or if I'm going to sell it and get money up so I can purchase the property and get it moving as fast as, as far as selling it goes, you know? My wife's got the truck to get out of here.
Can I just ask a question? Are you talking about the property right next to the, what is it, the Red Villager?
Yeah, it's a farmhouse.
Or, or, because it looks like there's two lots there now, is it one lot or is there two lots? Because we thought that property had sold before, and now it seems...
No, that's another parcel, there, there, there was a lot that was left over after the farmhouse sold.
Okay.
And that's in the middle, and then there's the other property that is being...
Well, the, the Nazarell by piece of property too.
Yeah.
So that property just the left is owned by the farmhouse then?
No.
Cannot be developed?
No, 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 that's Mr. Harrison's.
That's Mr. Harrison's property, that's the one we're talking about now.
Piece of my truck is mine.
So the, the red one...
Right next to that is Mr. Nazarell's.
Okay, so that was my question, which one is Mr. Nazarell's?
The one to the far left that's being filled in.
Literally across the street from the...
Yeah, that's, that's being filled in with material.
Yeah.
Right, because he's going to move down there or something like that, right? So you're, okay, we always thought it was just one piece, so you have the piece that's between the farmhouse and Nazarell's.
Right, where they have the sale sign on it.
Okay.
Yes.
I saw that today, it's the first time I've seen that.
Okay, so the board wanted to make a motion, you can make a motion, that you provide a six-month permit to July 9th of 2018 for two vehicles, as long as they're hidden by a fence.
I can do that.
That's my motion.
Second.
What he said.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Say hello to your sister.
Do I need to get a piece of paper?
You'll get a piece of paper.
I'll look on that tomorrow, I'll give you a ring.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll go slide at the door.
Great, thank you.
Take care. Okay. A couple more things, revocation hearing, I'm proposing having another one for Evergreen Beverages, Spring Lakes Liquor. The owner had provided the treasure collector back at the end of the year with two $5,000 payments, one of which unfortunately did not pass muster. In addition, the board had approved, not revoking the license, but requiring a payment of $1,000 a month starting this month. That hasn't happened either so far, so what I'm recommending is the board hold another revocation hearing for February 13th. I would provide another five weeks to the owner to catch up, give him sufficient notice and such, and my hope obviously is that he'll be able to remedy the situation.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion. Please.
Anyone like to move that?
Some of...
Second.
Moving second, yeah? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, in the audience.
And PM, I suppose, that's what I've got, I don't know if you've got anything else?
No, they'll take me down.
Oh, come on, the meeting's too short, let's find something else.
You're saying window.
We just had the other side of the building, Mr. D, we're ready to go. Yeah, I think we're good.
Chief, do you have anything?
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
When they came to me, I was questioning it, but I gave like...
Look at the roadblock.
Okay, then I'm good to go.